We are here in City Council chambers, John Farraro Memorial Council chambers, room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council members Cardenas, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Wesson, and Zine. We have eight members and are awaiting two more members to constitute the bare quorum, or ten, or two-thirds of our body, to begin the meeting. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 for each meeting. I want to thank our viewers who are tuning in. We broadcast live and then rebroadcast in the evenings. We're also available online, both live through streaming webcast video at our city's homepage at lacity.org, our award-winning web portal, and also you can pull down now on-demand any of our council meetings, where there is archived video of each of our full council meetings. Finally, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always call in using your telephone and listen to the proceedings of the City Council, and that number is (213) 621 CITY. It's a service called Council Phone, in which you can dial through the menu, again, (213) 621 CITY, and listen to the proceedings of the full City Council or any of our committee meetings. A schedule of the Los Angeles City Council calendar, including our committee meeting times and our council meeting times and locations, as well as our agendas, are available also online at lacity.org, and just click on the council link. Those are also available in person at the City Clerk's office and here in council chambers. Our city agendas, our council agendas are split into two sections, one for items which have not yet had a public hearing, and if members of the audience would like to be heard on those items, feel free to fill out a card in the back and to give it to one of the sergeants at arms, and we will take your comments. The other items have already had a public hearing. Every item will either have a public hearing in committee or in council, and it requires a reopening of those hearings in order to have public speakers on those items. Finally, if you would like to be heard on general public comment, which is for items which are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, you can also fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants at arms to be heard as well. I want to thank the council members who are here on time, pursuing to council rules. Again, council members Cardenas, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Wesson, and Zine are here. Our own council rules state that our council meetings will begin at 10:00 a.m. It is now past that hour. We are awaiting Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. We also would ask, thank you, Councilmember Alarcon, we now are one shy of a quorum. We also would commend to folks the public comment rules for giving public testimony, which are stated right there on the lectern, and also there is a timer to help people budget their time. Speakers may speak up to five minutes on items which are on the agenda, in addition to their two minutes for general public comment. Thank you for your patience as we await Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss to begin our meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present and a quorum as president.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds without objection. Those will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute agenda for today's meeting.
I know that many of us took part yesterday in Memorial Day celebrations and commemorations throughout the city and throughout this country. I know Mr. Labange was at Forest Lawn, Mr. Rosendahl was over at the National Cemetery, Mr. Weezer led a very moving ceremony as well at Cinco Puntos in Boyle Heights, and we played a little bit of music as well. Mr. Labange mentioned how moving it was to hear many of the anthems played yesterday, and we thank you for bringing that music in. So in honor of that, Mr. Labange, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and if I could ask everyone in chambers to please rise?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If John Kirk-Muckrey, a Navy officer, our great general manager of Recreation of Parks, may I pass the baton and lead us in the pledge, John?
Everyone, please rise. Honor America and those serving overseas defending our freedom. Put your right hand over your heart. Please repeat over me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Muckrey. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item noted for public hearing.
Okay. We have a card, so we will call that special. Next items?
Items two through fourteen are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, two through fourteen, any special items? Two through fourteen. Mr. Cardenas? Nope. Start two for Mr. Parks. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fifteen through twenty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Item fifteen is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We'll hold that on the desk. Fifteen, next items.
And they're actually our cards on items seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. That leaves sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? Sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. Seeing none. Let's take those up together. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven, thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Picked up two votes quickly there. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda items twenty-two through twenty-four, items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we do have cards on twenty-two and twenty-four, so we'll call those special for cards from the public. Item number twenty-three, does anybody wish to call that special?
Special, Mr.?
Twenty-three, Mr. Weezer?
It's present.
Okay. And that will take us back to public comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'd like to ask folks to come forward, again, remind folks of the rules that are there on the lectern, and ask first, we'll have Zuma Dogg, and then we'll go out to Van Eyes for Donna Perlman, excuse me, and Miriam Fogler. Mr. Dogg?
Yes, good morning, City Council. As you can see, I got another reality crew. They wanted to document Zuma Dogg as he's at City Hall, and boy, did they pick a day because we got something. Boy, the straw broke the camel's back this weekend. First of all, City Council, our good friend Kevin James from KABC, he is back on 870 KRLA 9:00 p.m., so I'd like you to please listen to him because he talks a lot about city issues, and I call in all the time, Kevin James, tonight at 9:00 p.m. on 870 KRLA, and I'll be talking about something. I would like to motion, City Council, we have a big problem with the neighborhood council system. Now, I appreciate Carol Baker-Tharp, I like her a lot. She's been put in charge of trying to, you know, clean up neighborhood council and fix the system. However, I understand that we have Jose Weezer, his planning deputy, Suzanne McLean, his planning deputy from the Eagle Rock, his paid staffer, Jose Weezer's paid staffer of City Council is on the neighborhood council as she sits on the Committee of Governance Relations. Okay, boy, that's some relationship. She works for you, you know? Carol Baker-Tharp said she wants to do more outreach and help neighborhood councils do more outreach. That's good, but that doesn't mean put City Council staffers on the council. Okay, what if you have, you want to get some public input to neighborhood council, and you say, "I got a problem with its development in Jose Weezer's district." Well, gee, you're gonna have a tough time because she works for Jose Weezer. It's like talking to Jose Weezer. If she has some input she wants to give him, tell her to just call her boss, Jose Weezer. She works for him. So I'd like City Council right now to make a motion, see if we have any leaders here in Los Angeles City Council. Now, the city is saying that, gee, Zuma Dogg, it's not against the law, the city attorney, we checked, and you're allowed to sit on City Council as a paid staffer and also sit on neighborhood council. There's no law against it? Well, let's make a law right now, okay? I'd like to see, do we have any leaders here? I want a motion that if you're a paid council member, if you're a paid staffer of Los Angeles City Council, you can't sit on neighborhood council. Does anybody see how ridiculous that is? So I'd like to see a motion for that right now, and go to mayor sam.blogspot.com because there's a lot of things. Mayor sam.blogspot.com. I'll be calling Kevin James on that. Zuma Dogg!
Our next speaker is Donna Perlman, out in San Fernando Valley.
Here I am. I am an unhappy member of the Garcetti Fan Club because you shouldn't cut off my friend Miriam on Friday, and you better watch out because someone might take your presidency for you. Anyway, I was corrected, my good friend Miriam, I called you congressman the last time in your councilman. I must've been blinded by your own pay raises, another in July, what a good life. Why does the city trust any project done by the CRA? It should be called the CDA, California Destruction Agency. They don't believe in greenery, don't believe in single-family homes, don't believe in the character of a town. All they believe in is huge, ugly, big development, and new modern art and dumb names like NoHo. What's that, No Hollywood? All they care about is money for their pockets and buying the City Council, seeing huge, big, grand avenue projects go up. I hope they get, they really get sued because we need to get rid of the CRA. I support the suit against the CRA. If you have any guts, you will look at the CRA and scrutinize their actions. Don't just close the roll, tabulate the vote, twelve ayes. CRA doesn't have the right to force people to move, even if it's only one on the block that says no to big development, no to eminent domain. I say no to the CRA. We don't need huge, big mini-malls, we don't need huge parking lots, we don't need big condos that tear down small homes, we don't need big skyscrapers, some new ties terrorists. I guess someone like Los Angeles, I guess, maybe they'll stay at the Hollywood Hilton. City Council, stop big development. You need to stop passing all these laws that believe in big development that cost millions of dollars, causing streets to close, causing huge traffic buildup, waiting for these atrocities to be built. Hell, it wasn't built in a day, you know? Council members, I know you care about us, I've seen it. When you talked about the new pet law and you're concerned about the animals and pet owners not getting unfairly taxed, I seen you stop and study bad laws, yet you don't study the CRA. Please study the CRA. Don't do any projects by them.
Thank you very much, Donna. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler.
Good morning.
Good morning. You know, that's unconstitutional to limit the person speaking five minutes the whole day. It's two minutes you give everybody on agendas, and I'm going to continue to speak what is necessary, that's for the, for the good of our city and good for the United States of America. And I've been brought very patriotic, very, very much, and I'm not going to take no limits on my freedom, unless I, of course, I use profanity that's uncalled for, and I would never like to do that. I like to be courteous and kind and nice, but I'm going to let you know that passing trash fees and raising our water rates is because you're allowing the CRA to take all our, all our tax increment money away. I don't see the account receivables coming back to the city. We should be taking over the CRA and disband it. It's a private agency working for developers, and developers are making you work for them by gaining contributions. And this is the reason why all this must stop. The city workers, who are civil service workers, are middle-class people, and the police and fire also are middle-class, they should not be, they should be getting coal as just like Department of Water and Power. I was happy about them getting a raise, but, you know, we need to include all city workers every, every year, no matter what. You get your annual mandatory raise from the county municipal judges, so I don't think there's any question about it, is that this, that what you did to me last week, cutting me off, fifty-nine seconds, was unconstitutional and infringement on my civil rights. I didn't do anything to cause me to have to be cut off like that, and that was very sarcastic what you did, Councilwoman Garcetti. I know your job is in danger because the City Council is going to be voting on you in July, whether you're going to keep your position there, so you better be a well-behaved boy. Thank you. By the way, I'm leaving with twelve seconds left, or left ten.
Thank you for the twelve seconds, we appreciate it. John Peterson, oh, I'm sorry, we have Marilyn Jackson as our last speaker in public comment.
Good morning, President Garcetti. I'm Representative Johnson, Johnson area. I'm concerned about hiring personnel in civil service. I work for the federal government, the VA, 351 East Temple. Now, I had coworkers which, we all took the examination, but we had nothing in common. So, one coworker has a child, and she is not married. Another coworker has a child, and she's not married. Well, I've been married, and when you don't have nothing in common with coworkers, you don't associate with them on holidays, you don't send Christmas cards. So my concern is that civil service be more precise in integrating the office personnel on all levels. I think it's very important because when you don't have anything in common with somebody, you can't, you haven't, you don't associate with them after you retire. So I think it's very important, and maybe the human resources be more selective in the office. I think it's very important that people have something in common. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. That closes our general public comment. If we can return to the items called special. First one, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, Mr. President, item fifteen is the appointment of Ms. Randy Levin as the general manager of ITA.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take that first? And Mr. Cardenas, we have number fifteen before us, and I'd like to recognize you as Chair of the Information and Technology and General Services Committee.
Hello, good morning. I'm Randy Levin.
Mr. Cardenas?
Good morning, Randy.
Hi.
And welcome.
Thank you.
So, is it interesting so far?
It's very interesting so far.
Good, good. Can you please tell the people of Los Angeles a little bit about your history? I, one of the things that I found that I actually was a little bit, not convinced that someone from the private sector could actually be effective in the public sector, but then when I realized who you were working for before and, and the amount of experience you have, et cetera, I, I realized that you're a great fit for the city of Los Angeles. Can you tell us a little bit about your last job?
Sure. I spent eight and a half years at NBC Universal doing information technology work as the vice president and group information officer there in the IT division, and I have had a twenty-four-year career history in information technology, and I'm just very excited to apply everything that I've done here to the city.
Now, there, you actually dealt with issues, obviously, information technology, keeping up upgrades, having to evaluate new systems, implementing new systems, and how big was, were some of the systems you actually had to implement?
Certainly, the biggest was a worldwide implementation of SAP, which was in twenty-six countries and fifteen languages around the world, approximately seventy-five million-dollar project, and required about a three-year commitment, and probably about, I'd say, a thousand to twelve hundred users. So it was a significant change for the whole organization.
And how did that system turn out?
It was fabulous. It's really been the basis for all of the other system projects that we continue to do at NBC.
Okay. Now, we're, we're a city of about forty thousand employees. Not all of them need to interact with you, but in our city, we have various departments, we have union representation, et cetera. Have you ever had to deal with those matters?
Absolutely. You know, just in terms of all the departments, certainly that's very analogous to all of the departments we had at NBC, in addition to all the countries that I had to interact with, and at NBC Universal, we had a significant amount of unions as well, particularly in the theme park areas.
Okay. So, theme parks in different parts of the world or right here in the United States?
Well, the one right here in Hollywood, the one in Orlando particularly, and then we also had a lot of union employees that worked actually at the, the studio lot here in, in Hollywood.
Okay. So, the bottom line is, you've had a very diverse background, specifically in IT, but also you've had to deal with management issues in and outside your department, you've had to deal with workers' issues, you had to deal with having to figure out how the lines are drawn with different interests and having to navigate through that, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. I feel very comfortable in that arena.
Okay. Well, Randy, welcome aboard, and, and I enjoy working with you so far, and I'm sure once my colleagues get to know you, they're really going to enjoy you as well. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate this opportunity to speak. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, the industry's going through a dramatic change, at least the cable television industry. Would you share with us your insight into how the phone companies are now coming in the cable business and what might also happen in Washington? Hold my time, please.
There's so much changing right now. I mean, nobody can accurately predict what's going to be happening, but technology is really going to the point where you can get video, films, TV, live, delayed, whatever, on any media that you have. And so, by the nature of that, the convergence of the phone companies and the cable companies and the satellite companies, everything is, is up for grabs in terms of how content is going to be delivered and to where. And so, you know, it behooves us to be plugged into all of those companies and into the legislature, whether it's here at the city, it's at the state level, or the, or the federal government level, to figure out where, you know, where the direction is headed and how it's all going to then be regulated.
Right now, one of these viewers, if their television set went bad on them, I don't know which camera they use on me, probably that one, and how do they get the government to help them if, in fact, the cable company, Time Warner, doesn't respond today with the new law?
Well, they can call, they can call our 311 call center and actually make a complaint against Time Warner Cable, which is the predominant cable company, if they are not getting the service that they require and satisfaction from them. They can also, though, use 311 to contact us for other issues as well for the city, all non-emergency issues.
And, and so, when you get a call from a cable customer upset, we used to call them, "I was in the cable business," and "I rate customer," what can you do for them?
Well, right now, what I did actually last week is I met with the president of Time Warner Cable for our area, and we're establishing a process by which those complaints will be escalated and then dealt with, and it will go right to him directly.
When the phone company comes into the business, how will you interact with them from the customer service standpoint?
The same way. I mean, we're going to set up a meeting with them when they really, you know, get in the picture in a bigger way and figure out processes and procedures for us working together.
Are they committed to having Channel 35 and 36, the interconnected channels, and having it on that placement number on, on their systems?
I can't speak specifically for each one, but certainly we are going to make that a focus and an emphasis, you know, in order for them to do business with us.
Do you see the federal government coming in now and preempting the state government? That seems to be the movement?
I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure, because states really want to still have some local autonomy, and I'm not sure that that's going to be in the best, best interest of the state or the local governments.
What becomes of public access?
Public access. There's a lot of opinions on public access. We're debating that internally right now. We're trying to see what the effectiveness is of the current way we do public access, or whether or not we should use some new technology for public access. I mean, with the internet and the, the advent of internet sites like YouTube and some of those things, you know, public access is, is everywhere, anywhere, so I'm not sure that actually having a station is the most effective way for public access. We're going to do some community outreach to figure out what's going to be the right mechanism for public access.
Right now, the cable company gets five percent, now an additional one percent. This additional one percent, will that go to the city first? This additional 1%, will that go to the city first? That's about $4 million, am I right?
Yes, it is. And it's to use, be used for capital and not operations, and we are looking at various ways to utilize those funds, maybe to upgrade our Channel 35 that everybody's watching right now.
Who will make those decisions about that $4 million?
We're going to put together a proposal and bring it forward to the council, and we're also going to bring it forward to the mayor and try and get everybody to buy into this proposition.
Is there a group of public access users that are somewhat organized, that they can present their point of view? Just parenthetically, you know, when I ran the cable company there, I had 700 producers who produced 3,500 shows a year, and I encouraged public access as electronic soapbox, especially in this great city. What role are the public access producers having with you in deciding where that money goes?
There have been a series, I think, of six to eight, there might have even have been more, before I came, public outreach sessions with those, with those producers. And so, we really need to meet with them and understand their requirements a little more, a little more deeply, so we can figure out what kind of technology can meet their requirements.
And what do you think of Channel 36 and its future?
Channel 36, we're, we're debating, actually, whether or not we should split 35 and 36, make 35 just like a local C-SPAN, which continues coverage, and make 36 more of the informational channel for education and information on the city. So that's what we're thinking about doing, but we have to work through the details of that.
And when you work through the details, you'll take it to the committee and take it to the council, and we'll all be part of this discussion.
Absolutely.
Congratulations for stepping up to the plate on this. These are changing times, I can tell you from my own history of, of knowing that industry. And so, you have a lot to deal with, and we look forward to hearing back from you periodically on how the changes of the new law in Sacramento impact us, what might happen in Washington. And I especially want to make sure that you share with us the future of public access.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Grue is our next speaker, then Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate that. Good morning. Just wanted to, and I'm glad to have you here, and I came from DreamWorks on the universe a lot, so I know a little bit, just a little bit about coming from that environment. One of the questions that, that we always get, and particularly whether it's in Budget Committee or in Mr. Cardenas's ITA Committee, is the fact that we have all these different systems that don't talk to one another. There was an opportunity, I guess, a few years back, to try to combine that, how we could work together. Just curious, was that one of the things that you found even when you were at Universal, that, how that occurred? Excuse me?
Yes. When I got there, it was a very analogous situation with very disparate, non-integrated systems, which caused a lot of inefficiencies in many areas. And so, working together and working collaboratively, we established some committees which were able to work through a lot of those issues, so that we could then put in an enterprise-wide system and then build upon that as the foundation for future applications.
I know you get a lot of pushback from some of our departments, who sometimes have invested a lot of money into that particular system. And again, sometimes it makes sense that they are separate systems, but I think more often than not, you know, hopefully, your expertise will help us bring a, a citywide plan, just with even in the city of Los Angeles, our employees and our departments, even with some of proprietary departments. It's one of the things I'm interested as we go forward. Also, on the 311 system, which, you know, has had, had a soft opening several years ago, never really had that hard opening, and, and people recommended to me, you know, why not put them on some of our vehicles, call 311, one call to City Hall. Interested, as you come back potentially as well, and as the new General Manager, to look at ways in which we can educate the public about utilization of the 311.
Certainly. I, yeah, and I would agree with you that we have not publicized 311 nearly as effectively as we could. And so, we are developing a marketing campaign for 311 and educating the public what, you know, what it is and what the benefits are, now that we have staff in place and operations to support it.
One of the things I would be interested in is our kind of response time and so forth. I don't know. I know during the Budget Committee, we talked about, you know, how many rings does it take? How often? I'm curious as to that aspect of it, as we wanted to have, still have it 24/7 for people to be able to, to call that. There was some concern raised by my constituency when we changed over, for example, on graffiti removal. Used to, they would call directly to those nonprofits for graffiti removal, and now it goes through the 311 system. And so, our 311 system is only as good as the departments who respond to the requests that 311 has. And so, anxious as, again, as someone new coming in and looking, ways in which we can improve that system.
Yes. We're going to have to work with every department that gets integrated into the 311 call center to not only make sure that they understand the routing of all the calls and receiving all the calls, but to obtain statistics on the actual closure of those calls, the actions taken on them, so we can be able to report them back out to the council.
Great. Well, welcome. I know you came into Budget, you'd only been there six days. Did excellent job and look forward to, to working with you, all of us, in, in Los Angeles, in particular, in this council, because we are now using the internet, we're using our websites, all of that, to really communicate with our constituency to deliver the services. And so, it's an integral part, as well as just our daily operations of being able to function. So, welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, and then Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Ms. Levin.
Hi.
One, I want to welcome you, and it's a, a real treat to hear the vast experience you have, especially in multilingual environments, which begs the question for me is, I chair what's called the Planning Land Use and Management Committee. Any given week, I'll have as low as 12, maybe as high as 30 cases, all land use issues. And what I find is the, the need to inform folks about what are the land use rights of both the property owner, the neighbor, and the city's role in determining these zoning laws. We have a wide range of neighborhood councils. Our city, two-thirds are renters. We have perhaps the largest number of people where English is not the first language. So it is not uncommon for me to have committee meetings in some form of dialect, in Chinese, or in Spanish, or another language, because of the presence of who's attending. But yet, I don't see our infrastructure, how we communicate to the communities reflect that particular demand. Do you see in your new role, given your background in integrating language, how we can better inform and prepare people as to how the city works, especially when it comes to land use impacts?
Yes, certainly. I mean, one of the things that we can be doing is using our internet more effectively to, to, you know, make the rules clear on, on what organization does what. That, we can actually make that available in Spanish or other languages as well, and we need to be looking at that, so that, you know, every person that lives in the city has access to the city, you know, in whatever form they communicate in. I knew, I know we do a lot with the hearing impaired, and so, I think that we, we should take that model, it seems to be effective, and, and roll that out in terms of language as well.
Is that something that you feel we should do in a motion form, or is that something that you feel could evolve within your work program as you take on this mantle?
Yes. I mean, after five weeks, I can't say that I'm an expert yet in this whole area, but as I get more ingrained in the department and find out what it is that we are doing, we will come back with a plan on, you know, the areas where we think that we need to provide additional language support.
And one last point. In some parts of the city, it tends to be the Alice Island of the West, where it's the direct line of immigration flow from every part of the world, almost. Yet, we don't have information that allows folks to understand what is a role of this municipal government in regards to certain immigrant issues. Is that an area that we can evolve into? Because it speaks to basic services. What rights we have as tenants, dealing with garbage pickup, you know, very fundamental issues, that perhaps in other countries, it's not as common.
Yes, certainly. I mean, we are a big melting pot, and I, I can say that our 311 call center actually answers in Spanish, and they have Spanish operators available as well. So, you know, I think this will be a big focus for us, you know, this year, to figure out, as we look at the whole area of community outreach, and figuring out how that's all going to work.
Again, welcome. I've been told be careful what you ask for, but at the same time, this is a great opportunity, and I see good changes ahead of us with your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our last speaker on the queue is Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
You know, I was saying, Mr. Dobry was my high school typing teacher, so that tells you how old I am. What kind of educational programs? Tell us a little about your youth and, and your college days, and I know, is this your family here?
That is my family.
Want to introduce your family and?
That's my husband, Maurice, in the yellow tie.
Good job.
My mother in the black sweater.
Hello, Mom.
My sister in the stripes.
Great.
Next to her. And my father, David, in the checkered tie.
That's very, welcome to Los Angeles, to the family, too. I want to welcome that. I think what's so important, you know, and I think Mr. Reyes was starting to allude to it, the family of Los Angeles, the call. ITA, when you talk about family, provided the vital communication link for the most recent Griffith Park fire, because cell sites were not available in the Greek Theatre area, and John Muckrey was here from the Parks Department just a, a minute ago. But they set up a, a system, which you probably were briefed on, from the Valley of the Greek Theatre up to the Observatory and up to Mount Wilson or wherever you did it. So, there's our family that we come from, there's the city family that you're in now. But tell me about your life as a student and growing up, and what interested you in this area to achieve such a prominent position? You can hold my time there, please.
Well, it's interesting that my, my mother is here, because she is the one that I'm going to credit with going into computers. I actually was a music major in college, on a music scholarship, playing the French horn. And my French horn professor sat down with me my freshman year and said, "There's only five major symphonies in the country. They take four French horns. How long do you want to live with your parents?" And so, you know, seeing the reality, I went home and called my parents, and my mother said, you know, "They're starting computers now. It's a real growing, it looks like it's going to be a growing field. You're good in math. Why don't you try that?" And then, pretty much, the rest is history. I switched into the business college, and all my career has been in IT. So it was really very, very good advice. I, you know, I have two children, one of them particularly very interested in technology. Well, they both are, but particularly, our son is very interested in utilizing technology, specifically to aid his homework. So I am, am pretty familiar with, with what, what's going on in technology just around the youth. One thing I want to talk about is we're doing a joint program this summer with UCLA, we, where they pay for 20 high school students to come in. They spend two weeks with them, training them on just how to work in a work environment. And then, the remaining six weeks, they come to us, and we spend six weeks training them in some area of technology. And, and we hope next year to agree, to really widely expand the program, so that we can take in more kids, because I think it's really critical.
That's great. And where'd you grow up?
11 years in New York, in Queens, and 10 years in Phoenix, and then predominantly the rest of the time here, for the exception of two years in New York with my husband.
Where'd you go to, where'd you go to high school in Phoenix?
Sunny Slope High School.
Sunny Slope. And, and what college did you go to?
University of Arizona.
So you're a Wildcat.
I'm a Wildcat, yes.
That's okay. That's all right. That's good. My philosophy is information is knowledge is power. And I think in following up to what Mr. Reyes said about the multilingual challenges of Southern California, Los Angeles, of finding ways to reach out to people, on the third floor over by the Clerk's Office, where you will be sworn in officially right there, there's a, a box called Ask Pat. You familiar with that box?
No, uh-uh.
It's an ITA box, where you're supposed to ask Pat all that information about where everything is. And, and I, I, maybe we should upgrade it and, you know, just say empowerment, you know, and multi-language is, just to, to get people to go there like a bank, to be able to go. And make sure all our libraries, we have a great librarian, Fontaine Holmes, I don't know if you've met her, but?
Yes. We're actually going to sit down next week to talk about some integrated programs between IT and the libraries.
Yeah, libraries are great. I believe they're great community information centers, resource centers, our recreation and parks facilities, some with buildings are great opportunities to connect people and empower people. I, I do like what you said about that small, only 20 children, but how we could enlighten them, and I am old-school, you know, in the sense, I, I'm still learning the computer, but, but it's amazing how the, my children, who are 11 and nine, fix everything, know everything, they know how to do it, so it's, it's a process. I did want to ask, on the Channel 35, Mr. Rosendahl was so good on that, how do you get it on the satellite? Because not all of us have cable.
Yes. DirecTV is the primary carrier, and we're in the process of trying to set up a meeting right now with DirecTV, because we feel that 35 only reaches about 40, 45% of the community via Time Warner Cable.
Well, they got the Board of Supervisors, and there's, there's five of them. We're 15, right, Herb? So 15 outruns five, so, although they're a stronger entity than that. I ran into Zevitt, Beverly and Alvarado this morning coming into town. But anyway, if you could look at that, because I think it would reach out a little bit more, because cable has changed drastically on that, so.
Yes, definitely. We think that's critical.
And on the 311, I know Ms. Grue spoke about that issue. I know Ms. Hahn's been a champion of that, in that, trying to get, you know, put them on the buses, call 311, one call to City Hall. I think that's all that you had to say. And you'd say in multiple languages, that would be very good. And lastly, too, which is so important about technology, you got our side, the public information side, but for the employees. Make sure that we, and argue with us, tell us, almost develop a grading system. I was going to ask the CIO to try to create that, where you would say, compared to where we are in government, how good are we equipping our staff, so they're saving time in the field, a building inspector could check it off and get it right, et cetera, et cetera, and maybe come up with some grading points, so we know we're going to reach a level. And what city is the best in the big cities, the top big 10 big cities in the country in technology?
I think we're going to have to go area by area, because there's no one that's the clear standout in everything. And certainly, you know, one area that's interested everybody is Wi-Fi. So, we can put together basically a, a, a brief assessment for you on all of the areas and where we stand.
Tickets, which are digitally done now, they don't handwrite them anymore and all that stuff. They were giving tickets out on Largemart this morning, they're painting the lines, and they didn't have the cones in front of where they were painting, yet they had the postings that looked like a movie company was coming. So we're asking the department to review that. And now, with technology, you could say any ticket between 8:45 and 9:13, before we got there to put the cones up, could be dismissed because administratively, but DOT will handle that. But all that's important, all these departments. Anything I or my staff could do, I handle the Arts and Parks, Health and Aging Committee for the city of Los Angeles. Certainly welcome you and hope you and your family have a wonderful stay and a great career it is. And it's an honor to serve the people of Los Angeles, and I know you'll do them well from the, your family's support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Just want to welcome in your family. It's nice to see your family join you at this occasion, when you get grilled by the city council to see if we're going to confirm you to this position. Your husband's sitting there ready to jump on and say, "We don't do it." I'm sure we're going to do it, sir. The mayor makes wonderful selections for these different General Manager positions. This department has a representative that serves the city council, Roger, right back here, who's not even paying attention right now, but normally he is. He's a representative from IT that takes care of our computers and all the issues. Just one thing I would alert you to is, you look at the private sector, where you come from, where they got nice budgets, where they got state-of-the-art technology, and when you look at the city workforce and what they have to use antiquated equipment, when it comes to information technology, some of the issues that, like the LAPD, the computers in the cars, which they now have a new generation of computers in the cars, but the employees that write the notes and the pads and this and that, if we can go more for computers and more to put into the system, I think it'll be a lot better for everyone, the communities that we serve. I know that we had a server that was used by 15 council officers. that was used by 15 council officers. I understand we have our own server now, which speeds up the process. Roger informed me of that this morning. I mean, we would wait a long time to get responses on the computers because I heard we had one server servicing 15 council members. So that type of technology, which is to government, new, to the private sector, you know, old hat. But the challenges you're going to face coming to government is a whole lot different coming from NBC Universal where they had the different philosophy. And we try to exemplify the best service we can to the people. And as far as computers, you look back at the history, everything's been paper and pen, and the archives are filled with those paper and pen documents. Hopefully, we can get more into this with your experience that you bring forward to the City Council and to all the employees of the City of Los Angeles with your knowledge. And as a Wildcat, if you go to Griffith Park, you'll find a lot of Wildcats because of the fire, and Tom Labange knows, a graduate of Marshall High, the historian of the City Council, will tell you everything you need to know about Marshall High, Griffith Park, and everything else around Los Angeles. He is our historian. And that's not negative, that's positive. But she mentioned Wildcats from Arizona, and I know there's Wildcats up in Griffith Park, and we try to save all the animals. So welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Welcome, family of the City of Los Angeles. And I know you'll enjoy your adventure in the City of Los Angeles, City of the Angels. So welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Welcome aboard. Please, round of applause for our new general manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item one was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We have two cards for item number one. I'd like to ask John Peterson to come forward first. After Mr. Peterson will be Nancy Wyatt. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is John Peterson, Peterson Law Group. I'm here on behalf of Richard Rettgard, the property owner. And we're actually here to applaud you for moving forward on this. The property has been lingering under the cloud of uncertainty for the past few years, and the city's moving forward on this project at this point would remove that cloud, and we appreciate the action. So we do have a disagreement over value, but that's for a different forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next is Nancy Wyatt.
Good morning, council members. I'm Nancy Wyatt. I'm the Land Use Chair for Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Before I speak on this issue, I want to clarify that we did not receive notice in time to agendize this for our full board, but our Land Use Committee did agendize it, and we are in complete agreement that we wish to see this go through. I am here to support the council member this morning and to request your support on the purchase of the Security Pacific Bank Building in Highland Park. As you know, we are a very populous community, one of the highest populations for a neighborhood council, Historic Highland Park Council, and we desperately need to have constituency services available, and we also need office space for some of our community organizations that remain homeless as far as office space is concerned. So this has been a difficult thing. I know that it has been available to us, but each time it has been beyond our grasp. And now, I would like to say that the community is very happy that we are dealing with it once again, and we're sorry that it has reached the point of imminent domain, but we have mixed feelings and that we do have hope that it will be available to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our first speaker from the councils, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. This is a building that's been vacant for approximately over 10 years. It's one of the beautiful bank buildings. The architect, the same architect that built the original Bank of America buildings back the turn of the century. So it's a very historic building. It was the downtown of Highland Park throughout the last, up to the 1970s, with the advent of the goal line being placed right behind it, given the resurgence of Highland Park. Our densities are very high. There are certain sections of Highland Park we're at 20,000 people per square mile. So looking at smart growth, smart use, to have city services right there will lower our traffic counts, make it much more convenient for folks who live in the Northeast to come to this place. And it would also allow for other government officials, service providers, nonprofits to be under one roof as a one-stop shop. So I encourage an a-vote, and I appreciate your support on this endeavor and realize this dream of creating a centralized service center for our community in the Northeast.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We appreciate the comments. And if nobody else wishes to be heard, let's go ahead, Mr. or Madam Clerk, please, and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item two was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, we have item number two before us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have the CAO, CLA, come up in the mayor's office staff. I would just like to start off by saying thank you for the tremendous effort. Last year, I think we got this much later, and we asked you to put forth the effort this year to get it a little sooner. What the concern, I think, in the timing was that we got it while we're in the middle or getting started in the budget process, so we were not able to adequately address it until today. That's why we dealt with it on waiving it from Budget and Finance. Can you give us just an overview of the process that you went through and whether we can expect to see this maybe in the first quarter of the year before we get into budget in April, May time sequence, and then what the impact could be if we're asking to move it up earlier, and what would be some of the things the council would have to address as to amendments to a plan if it was brought earlier?
Okay, Jacqueline Wagner, CAO. The LA for Kids Steering Committee sends a report to council annually consistent with state requirements to begin the assessment process. This assessment report addresses the administrative requirements associated with levying the assessment, transmits the draft engineer's report, and provides information about the projects to be funded in the coming year. It also lists projects proposed to be funded over the course of the next five years. It contains many attachments outlining a substantial amount of information. Among the actions recommended, the proposed 2007-08 Prop K Assessment Report includes capital improvements to parks and recreational facilities citywide to be undertaken in the current fiscal year, in the coming fiscal year. Council adoption of the engineer's report, which must occur by June 30th, will levy the assessment. As to the timeline, we have typically sent it anywhere between April and June. Sending it, transmitting the complete report in March, which is what we previously discussed and have agreed to tentatively, I don't think will pose a problem or a burden on staff. There is one understanding, however, and it is that with sending forward an assessment report in March, there will still allow 90 days for some actual reconfiguration of the projects, and that is the action that would be taken, that would need to be taken by June 30th, would be any amendments, meaning reconfiguration of projects, reprogramming funds from the upcoming year to the current year, and so on.
Is that the reason that we have the A-B plan when you submitted?
Exactly. The A-list, which is one of the attachments to this report, lists and identifies all of the projects and the scopes that are to be completed in the upcoming expenditure year. The B-list is a list of all of the alternate projects that can be substituted for the projects on the A-list, assuming that the CQ documents have been filed and are appropriate.
Okay. But there, each project generally has some issue other than the funding. It may be CQ, it might be a planning effort in another department. So all of them have their own issues as relates to going through the system?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So if we get the projects or your report done earlier, then the one potential is there may be more adjustments between, say, March to June?
Yes, sir.
But that's not unrealistic to what we've done in prior years, that we've made adjustments, maybe not through motions, but we made them in some fashion?
Exactly, sir. And in fact, we have a public hearing that's currently scheduled for June 13th. It is not uncommon to have changes between now and June 13th. So over a 90-day period, there will definitely be some changes. But I think that we can handle it.
Also, we're dealing with a finite amount of money. It's 25 million. No matter what we do, it's a matter of shuffling within the 25 million, how it will be used, not that we're asking for more money or looking for other sources.
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay. And so, the issue that we come up with then, if, and again, we had to waive it because from April through very recently, we've not had a budget and finance meeting. So if we were able to look at this, and if I understand it correctly, the most difficult coordinating part of this program is the community outreach and the community input.
Yes, and per your recommendations last year, we moved up the RV NOC Regional Volunteer Neighborhood Oversight Committee deliberations from January to February timeframe to October to November. So with that scheduled to convene in this October, November, we should be able to meet the timeline of releasing the report by March.
When moving it up, did you get any less participation this year than in prior?
I'm happy to report that all of the council offices appointed at least two members, which is what's required, and we had a tremendous turnout and attendance by all involved. It was a really good process.
Okay. So then, after the October, November, this is a matter, then the CAO, CLA's office getting together, putting together the report that would get to the council prior to March 30th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what we'll do.
Or in that area.
Within that area, we will definitely do our best to release the approved and as final a draft as possible by the end of March.
But, and again, as long as everybody understands that there is some flexibility between March and June of moving funds around, but again, it's a matter that getting it done early gives us more of a view of the impact on the general fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just ask that we move this report, but also ask that we give direction that in future years, that the timeline to the council would be as of March 30th, well before the general fund budget comes forward.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Anybody else wishes to be heard? I think I should bear up pointing out that Mr. Neil Drucker does have a pretty mean jump shot that he exhibited with a tie-on at a gym opening last week. So we appreciate that. Good work. Anyhow, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 17 was called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Zuma Dogg is our first speaker. Not seeing Mr. Dogg here. We'll pass on, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Donna Perriman is our next speaker, and then Miriam Fogler.
The City Council looks like they really love the way fees. Someone's going to have to make that up. It's not fair for the bulk of the people to pay for the events of the few, like events like the Immaculate Heart of Mary Church Annual Fiesta, Day of Pampering, St. Anthony's Annual Meeting Banquet. It's not fair that I should have to pay for something like that, because somewhere along the line, it's going to come down. And then you have these Ocean 13 Movie Premiere and Hand Footprint Ceremony and Corazon, Corazon Bandito Event and Cabana Club Event, which I, it says, well, the club sponsor will reimburse the city, but I don't believe it. Will they really pay it back? I guess Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Gruel believe they will, but will you pay out of your pockets if they don't? Everyone is getting taxed out of their homes, and ULYT organizations have events that they don't have to pay for. If they can't afford it themselves, they shouldn't have the event. Why don't you have them repay with interest like credit cards? If they don't, if they don't pay, we will, I know, and you will too, because somebody has to pay, and I know the city will have to pay for it. Bye.
Thank you. And just, I know Miriam Fogler's coming forward, and just, yes, as an FYI, we share that same concern, and those three items, Ocean 13, 17E, 17F, the Corazon Bandito and the Cabana Club, 17G, are all being reimbursed. And when folks do not reimburse the city, it does go up there in arrears, and we take collections on that. So thank you for that concern, and we certainly share it. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker.
Thank you for the nice response. By the way, my brother is a DirecTV, so I'm hoping that he can see the City Council. Getting on the fees now, let's get this organized, you know, these special fees that you're charging. Make sure you can collect the fees from these vendors, from these people, because it's very important if you want to balance the books here. We have the budget coming up on 22. So I would really appreciate that so that we don't have to impose to the public of water increases and trash fees, because after all, we are paying the DWP. But the special fees have a big play, too, here, because if we don't have accountability and have an audit here and get these people to pay for these, you know, these special events, we're really in trouble, really in a lot of trouble, and especially with the CRA taking a lot of the funds from the general fund also. So we need to be balancing here. And I know the police department needs the money too, because they're having some kind of a balancing act. It was in the paper today. So we need to be really on top of this. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Garcetti.
Appreciate it. That is our last public comment on that one. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 20 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. I was informed that the two cards we had in Van Nuys have been pulled by request from the speakers. That leaves one card here. Zuma Dogg, is he here? I do not see him still here. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Council members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Sorry, Ms. Hahn, on this item or something else?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on 20, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. May we have item 10 forthwith to the mayor, please?
Sure. If there's no objection, we'll send 10 forthwith. Next item, please.
Item 21 called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Just have one card. Again, Mr. Dogg. I do not see him here. Mr. Dogg? No. We'll close the public hearing. Go ahead and open the roll on 21, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 22 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Again, Mr. Dogg, I do not see. And we have two cards in the Valley. Miriam Fogler is our first one. Item 22.
You know, we were talking about this in the budget, I think it was last week, about how much the police need the funding. And really, we do need to be funding them, the same amount of money with the officers that are leaving the department. We should be using that same money that are spending, we should be spending for the new officers to replace them. It's not right to go and impose a trash fee under DWP to raise money to hire new officers and just suspend, or just get rid of that money that we've been using for officers that we've had for, who are retired. Gosh, this is ridiculous. You're taking the money somewhere else, and you're putting new money from taxing, I mean, not tax, but fee, getting fee collection from the ratepayers and the DWP bill, and, you know, now you want to impose a trash fee. We already have trash fee already on DWP. I don't know what you're, you're boondoggling around a lot with the budget here. I see what you've done here. You go from one department, transfer money to another, and then blah, 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 and, you know, you need to have a straight amount of money, which each department has, and then break it down, how much it is. You don't just transfer some money to another department, to another department, and then we lose where it's going. And that's very confusing to the average person. So, especially the CRA, what you're doing there is you, you have used block grants, you use different types of funding, and then you don't put it in with the same, in the same area where you can see everything. You need to have this all organized. And, you know, we need somebody who can do the books, the accounting, that way, so we can, it can be very simplified. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our general, I'm sorry, Donna Perriman is next, and then that will be our last speaker on this item. Ms. Perriman?
Okay, yes. I still a little bit, Mr. Garcetti. But anyway, I don't like the trash fees. I can't afford these trash fees. I can barely make it as it is. I'm staying with a friend who is letting me stay there, but if she has to go up and pay these trash fees, then of course I have to help her out and pay these trash fees. And anyway, let's see. I don't think it's fair for to pass on, especially that it looks like the homeowners are getting the bulk of this. And although other people do get trash, it looks like the homeowners are going to have to take up the whole thing. So please reconsider.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, we only do collect from homeowners and units four or less. That will now be before us. I'd like to call on any council members? Nope? Let's go ahead then and open the roll. Mr. Parks?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's for another item. Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
That we get a view from...
Oh, you, on this one, okay.
On this one.
So I recognize Mr. Parks.
On 22?
Yes, 22.
Okay. We're going to have the staff come up, just to keep us all aware of what is, we'll be confronted with over the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Let me start off with the CLA. Give us an overview of what we're confronted with here today, and then what are the steps after the vote?
Essentially, what you have before you today is the actual budget resolution, which documents the actions that the council took a week from yesterday, last Monday during your all-day budget session. This then would, if passed by the
This then would, if passed by the council, would go to the mayor. The mayor then has five working days in which to consider and sign or veto any portions of the resolution. Should the mayor veto any portions of the resolution, the council would then have five working days to consider any overrides of any vetoes.
Give us an idea of approximately timeline of what the five working days, when that would maybe fall on the council?
Well, if this passes today and goes to the mayor forthwith and gets to the mayor today, then the five working days would, I believe, be by the close of business next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so that's the earliest?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that's not the earliest. That is the deadline at which to veto.
The deadline, okay.
The mayor could sign it this afternoon.
Okay, could sign it, but that's the drop dead date is next Tuesday.
Right.
Colleagues, I'd just ask that as we've gone through all these 60-plus hours of hearings and then also the full day last Monday, that we move forward on the ordinances that also that, as stated earlier, that we cause it to go forthwith after the vote. If there are issues of major concern that someone would like to amend, what I would recommend, we do it after July 1st through motions and committees so that we can address it. But today is too late in the game for our charter responsibility to dramatically alter what's before us. And so, I would recommend that we move this as offered and that we also go forthwith after the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. So, I should receive and file my amendments then?
Until next Tuesday.
Until next Tuesday. All right. Any other council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And without objection, we will send that forthwith, number two as well. And that will go forthwith to the mayor and we look forward to his signature. Next item, please.
Item 23 was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, number 23?
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a Section 245 and I move to assert jurisdiction over this item and send it back to the Plumb Committee if possible. There were some discussion as to whether what came out of the East Area Planning Commission was actually what was in the report. We want to clarify that and get the facts on the table before we approve this item.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Let's go ahead and open the roll on Prop 245, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And without objection, that will be sent to the Plumb Committee. Thank you. Next item.
Item 24 was called special for cards from the public.
We have one public speaker card, Miriam Fogler, on number 24. Folger, excuse me. That's in Van Nuys. Do we have the connection? Hold on one moment, Miriam, we're just getting the connection. Been informed that she's no longer there in Van Nuys, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing on that item. Any council members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
All right. Colleagues, now is time for announcements. Folks have any announcements they'd like to make? Mr. Laban?
Memorial Day was a very good day to remember those who really gave it all to this country and their devotion of service. Like many of you, we were throughout the community at events. I was at Forest Lawn and it was great to see soldiers from World War I all the way up to this present conflict. And the support that's necessary to help is so important. Remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, who lost loved ones, like the Joseph Anzac family of Torrance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. Any other announcements, colleagues? Does anybody have any adjourning motions today? Yes, we do. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. I'd like to recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The city family suffered a loss on May 10th, 2007, Kanam Muradian with the age of 88. Kanam was born in 1918 in Aleppo, Syria. She moved to Beirut, Lebanon at an early age with her family and moved to Mosul, Iraq at the age of 45 with her husband Hartun Zorlian. Her husband died within a few years of their move, so she returned to Beirut to be with her sister's family. She was closest with Andre, Bedig, and Nasig. Kanam spent her time in Beirut, helping families and young individuals who were refugees from Iraq. She would assist them in adjusting to life in Beirut, helping them to find food and housing. Her generosity extended to non-refugees as well. In 1983, she left Beirut to come to Southern California to live with her nephew Andre and niece Nasig and their daughter Salpi. Kanam was down-to-earth and a giving individual. She taught others the importance of family and the value of sensitivity towards other people's needs. She will be missed and remembered fondly for her honesty, courage, kindness, and love. She is survived by her nephew Andre and her nieces Nasig and Salpi, as we adjourn in her memory.